This conference will now be recorded.
Rule call this meeting of the Sedalia City Council of order. We'll begin with prayer and pledge of allegiance. Chap. Maxine of the floor will lead us through the prayer.
Please join me in our invocation. Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council, mayor, administrator, staff, and members meet to analyze, to hear about, to discuss many, many important matters for the betterment of this city. We are so glad for their dedication to service, all of our citizens. We would ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, ambulance, EMTs, hospital staffs, all who serve protect us often at the risk of their own lives. And tonight, the Sedalia Fire Department honors Jason Wolf, filtration plant operations water department, 25 years, Kenneth Oswald, equipment operator, street department, 25 years, Christopher Maggard, fire driver engineer, fire department, 10 years service, and William Brown Jr., custodian library, five years service. These people work for our betterment and for our community. We are so thankful for them. They are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many have fought and died to create and preserve for 246 years. We ask your protection for all who have served today, military and civilian here and throughout the world protecting our country. And as we approach this sacred holiday season, let us remember the true meaning of this time of a tiny baby who was born and became one of the greatest of all men on this earth and our Savior. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. In all this, we pray in the name of that risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Our legislative members to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic fully understand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
Rule call, please.
Robinson.
Here.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
First item on the agenda is our service awards. We'll invite up Chief Irwin to go ahead and present his service award.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Shaw, thank you for having me this evening. Tonight, we are going to recognize Chris Maggard for celebrating 10 years of service to the city of Sedalia. Driver operator Maggard was promoted to the rank of driver exactly one year ago tomorrow. So he's been exceptional help in working with the lighting on our fire apparatus and helping, and is going to be helping us with our radio programming here in the future. Although myself and driver Maggard do not always see eye to eye, he is always a great help and works through issues in resolving them. Driver operator Maggard has a number of state certifications to his credit, a fire inspector two, instructor two, and also a fire officer two. In 2015, then firefighter Maggard was also issued a meritorious service award for search and ultimate recovery of a fire victim victim at great risk to his own well-being. I look forward to working with driver Maggard for the next 10 years. Chris Maggard, thank you.
Thank you very much.
As a record. Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of previous session minutes. These are the council meeting minutes from November 21st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, now we have the rule call of our standing committees. Up first, we have finance administration, Chairman Marshall, you have the floor.
A few items here. First, as part of our strategic planning process, each year, we ask our outside service contractors to make a presentation on how the funds were used this year for what services and costs they propose for next year. Tonight, we have presentation from Sedalia Pettis County Economic Development. With that, I will turn it over to Jessica Craig, which I do believe is joining us via phone.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay? Fantastic, I appreciate the chance to join you virtually. I would love to be there in person, however, myself and my family tested positive for influenza A earlier today. So with that, I'll go ahead and kick off. And please stop me if you have a hard time hearing me or give any questions. So here, if you could advance the next slide. So what is economic development here in Sedalia Pettis County? We are proud to call economic development business expansion, business retention, new business creation, and business recruitment. A lot of people think that business recruitment is the sole focus of economic development, but we understand that you need to be taking care of the existing businesses first and foremost, so we're very proud of a strong focus on that. Next slide, please. So to that extent, Sedalia Pettis County, we are proud to be home over 70 manufacturers and industrial-related businesses. We focus on manufacturing, warehouse logistics, energy, technology, and headquarters. Our job is to create new wealth and bring new money to the community. And the reason we focus on those industries, if we grow those industries, there's a seven times return on our investment, so $1 invested in those industries changes hands seven times before it leaves the community. Next slide, please. Some of those companies that call Sedalia Pettis County home, I like to put this slide out to show the diversity of our products. When we have economic downturn, we weather that storm really well, and I think the pandemic is a great example of that. From toolboxes to wire, to wheels, to ammunition, to great food at Tyson, to food service equipment at Duke Manufacturing, we have a very diverse portfolio of products that are made in Sedalia, and because of that, we remain steady. We focused on business retention a great deal during the pandemic, and those efforts are really paying off last year and this year. We're seeing a lot of those existing businesses reinvest and expand at their existing businesses. Next slide, thank you. So 2021 has been a fantastic year for us. We will likely end the year with about $100 million in capital projects announced. And if you look back to 2017, that was the year we announced New Core coming to Sedalia, and that was a fantastic announcement, and we thought, how could we ever top that? We have several projects in our portfolio this year that we have closed and announced that will add up to over 200 jobs created and over $100 million capital investment. So those projects include Prismian Group. You may know them by General Cable or Alkin Cable. They are out west in Sedalia. They just announced about a couple weeks ago, actually, a $45 million investment expansion there with 215 retained jobs, 60 new jobs, and an expansion of 115,000 square feet. To put it in perspective, that company has 29,000 employees globally. They could have expanded anywhere, and our commitment to working with them, they ultimately chose to expand in Pettis County, so we're very excited about that expansion. Simco is a family-owned company with two locations in Minnesota and Ohio. They provide epoxy coating solutions to rebar. They announced just about a month ago their new 67,000 square foot building that will be built with the Sedalia Rail Industrial Park. They will be transforming about 44 acres into a state-of-the-art manufacturing facility. 35 new jobs and $18 million capital investment. Impact Science announced in September their new 60,000 square foot headquarters and manufacturing facility in the Thompson Meadows Industrial Park, which you may know that to be across 50 highway from Menard. That will be $8 million capital investment, 45 retained jobs, and we're excited for development to happen in that location. Maxion Wheels, we have been supporting them for quite some time to help reinvest in that facility. We are excited to announce in July that they will be bringing three new product lines here to include 60 new employees and $20 million capital investment, including 225 retained jobs. Again, that's a company that could have invested anywhere. They're actually Brazilian-owned, so we were pleased to be able to partner with them. And Wire Co. and Prismian both announced expansions in 2021. That was a direct result of us continuing to work with them to keep them open during the pandemic where other plants they had were being shut down. And we have one additional business expansion announcement coming in the next 15, 30 days, so stay tuned there. That will be just shy of 50 new jobs and $7 million capital investment. So in the last six years, we worked with companies diligently to create 958 new jobs, $408 million capital investment, and the retention of over 1,600 new jobs. So if you go back to that seven times factor, you could do the math at seven times $408 million capital investment. When we say we're trying to bring new money and new investments to the community, that's what we're talking about. Also on that slide, you'll notice that there's rendering on the bottom right-hand corner of Simco's new facility there, that they are actively constructing. Next slide, please. So what are our priorities for 2023? I often have people ask me during project announcements, what's coming next, or what are you doing next? And my answer is always deliver, because the hard work really starts when we announce the project. That's when construction starts, from the implementation of sewer and water and roads and electricity. Our job is to deliver. So we'll be working with Simco, Impact Science, Prismian, Maxion, and the other pending projects to make sure the build-out of their growth here, their expansions, their new buildings is successful. Secondly, our focus is to land the deal. We have a very robust pipeline of 16 active business expansion and recruitment projects in our pipeline today. Now, you may recall, it takes anywhere from 12 to 18, possibly even 24 months for us to land an economic development project, to bring it to closure. So these projects in the pipeline take quite some time, and we're excited about what that brings to the future. We are working with the state of Missouri and the Missouri Partnership to be one of Missouri's first premier site at the Sedalia Rail Industrial Park. We are one of the only locations in Missouri that has significant contiguous acreage that can be tied to the railroad, to highway access, to industrial water, sewer, electricity, and natural gas. We're going to continue to invest in tools to help tell our story virtually. There's a lot of businesses and site location consultants that have started to assess the community and look at sites more virtually, so we will continue to help tell our story virtually. And that goes along with building out our marketing capacity for our sites and buildings, both in person and virtually. We've been very appreciative and thankful for the partnership with the Sedalia Police Department and their drone unit. They have helped us utilize their drone unit and all of their technology to get aerial footage, both photography and videos, for us to help tell our story, show real estate to businesses and site location consultants. And talent. We know that talent and people are the number one driver of where companies are growing and expanding, and so continue to develop those initiatives locally, like the Center for Veteran Reintegration, making sure our veterans have a pathway to gain full employment once they decide to transfer out of active military duty. And the great new workforce innovation center at State Fair Community College, continuing to support that. Lastly, as it relates to childcare, we often know it's a great barrier for some working individuals. This has been a key piece of my portfolio for the last five years, working with employers to try to develop an employer-sponsored childcare center. So I hope that we'll be able to report in the next 30 to 60 days that we have found a solution to launch that within Sedalia. Very excited about that unique partnership. So with that, coming also this year, we plan to have continuing upgrades to our technology. We do have some new workforce data that we would like to procure that really tells our story. We have a 10-county labor shed into Sedalia every single day, and so there's some data that we would like to purchase. Also, we're due for new desktop computers for our staff, and so there's some line items there that we will need to invest in. We also have an increase in operational cost year over year. So with that, we would like to request a net increase of $5,000 from the city of Sedalia. Next slide, please. And I would say it takes a village. Economic development is definitely a team sport. I appreciate each of you for being a part of that team. You can see here on this slide the team members that it takes to deliver all of this success that we've seen and we will see going forward. So I appreciate the partnership with the city of Sedalia, with Calvin Shaw, our city administrator, who is really my main point of contact for projects, really, really do appreciate that. So with that, I would love to pause and take questions if anybody may have them.
Any questions, council? Having heard none, thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
You will soon. Yeah. Agreed.
Thank you.
Second item I have. Sections of our city policies address the handling of city funds and assets, as well as ethics and conflicts of interest. It is difficult to find specifics on prevention and detection of fraudulent behavior. Since fraud risk can come from so many different individuals within the city, there needs to be a more specific policy in regards to fraudulent activity. Mayor Dawson and the city staff have worked together to develop a set of policies and procedures dealing with the prevention, detection, and investigation of fraudulent activity.
Any other council questions regarding?
Yes, we have to make one correction here. It says, "The city clerk is hereby directed to file in her office a duplicate or copy of the Code of Conduct after it's been executed by the parties duly authorized representing." Need to change that "her" to "him."
Yep, that tells you how long ago we started. Yeah, we can do that. Good catch. Any others?
How about, I have, we have a fraud investigator in this document, and it's appointed by the mayor and the city administrator. I think we should consider the appointment of that fraud investigator to be the mayor, the city administrator, and the city council. It just kind of gets more people involved, and I think it's better for the mayor and the city administrator. We all need to have an investment. If we get to that point where we need that, I think we all need to be invested in it.
Everybody, we got a, we got some motion on the floor to amend the policy.
I'll make motion as I say it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. I'll make that amendment. I think we will move on to the rule again. Yeah, so now, now I believe you would entertain a most, have the first read of the ordinance with the, as amended. Call for the first read of the ordinance as amended.
Bill number 2022-200, an ordinance adopting a fraud prevention and detection policy for the city.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-200, an ordinance adopting a fraud prevention and detection policy for the city.
Final passage.
Second. Rule call, please. Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Third item I have. Our finance director, Jessica Pyle, has identified a conflict in our Code of Ordinances. The text of the code states a specific penalty for delinquent businesses, licensers. The fee schedule and the codes state a different amount. Staff recommends eliminating the specific amount in the text of the code and refer to the fee schedule. Any council discussion regarding this ordinance?
Question, what was the amount?
Do we know? It was 10% plus 3% per month in the text, if I remember right, and then the fee schedule was 10% for the first month and 1%. And we're recommending changing that to the 10% and the 1%. Did I get those numbers right, Jessica? Any other council discussion or question? Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-201, an ordinance amending section 1228 and fee schedule regarding penalties for delinquent business licenses.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-201, an ordinance amending section 1228 and fee schedule regarding penalties for delinquent business licenses.
Final passage.
Second. Rule call, please. Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Final item I have. Staff has identified a grant opportunity that would help us improve our cybersecurity system. Our IT manager, Monty Richardson, is working through the allowable items under the grant for areas we can benefit. The grants are up to $200,000 and would require a 10% local match. This will be a resolution to authorize the application for the grant. Any council discussion? Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2003, a resolution authorizing submission of an FY 2022 state and local cybersecurity grant application.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
We have four items tonight. The first item I have is the approval of a quitclaim deed. The developers of the property in the areas of Lamb Drive and West 10th Street have completed their construction to city specifications and are ready to turn over the property.
Any council discussion regarding this matter? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-202, an ordinance accepting Lamb Drive and West 10th Street extensions for ownership and city maintenance.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-202, an ordinance accepting Lamb Drive and West 10th Street extensions for ownership and city maintenance.
Final passage.
Second. Rule call, please. Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Take an item I have tonight is an ordinance for an acceptance of an easement at 101 South Washington. Staff has negotiated with the owners of that property to obtain an additional easement for exchangement of replacement of the driveway to the property. This additional easement will help with truck traffic in that area, with larger truck traffic in that area.
Any council discussion?
I do have a question. Brenda, would you mind, I know you explained this to me earlier today when we talked about this, but could you just explain a little bit about why we wanted to widen that and just if you wouldn't mind? I know a couple of our council members, we were kind of talking about it too.
There's a structural barrier from the bi-dock property that limits the amount of space that's available in the existing right-of-way, and you cannot remove that structure without impacting the ability of the load-bearing capacity on the bi-dock. That's step one. Okay, so in order to shift it to the south, we need roughly 10 feet of additional easement. The property owner has agreed to provide us that 10 additional feet. If we, in constructing the new sidewalk that needs to go into place anyway along Washington from basically Main Street to the first alley, will put in two pieces of concrete that would allow their drive approach to go in, so for the additional easement, they get their drive approach completed.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Does that make sense?
Yep, I just wanted to be sure with it, you know, we just had some questions. I know you and I spoke about it earlier, and I just wanted to be sure that everybody understood.
And there is one power pole that will need to be moved.
Yes.
If you go through the intersection right now and look at that corner, they brush that power pole when they go around it with a 53-foot trailer.
And would you explain the diverting, the big trucks, and which ways they were going to go? Because I know that I did, I did have someone contact me this afternoon about that, and the direction that you.
A long-term strategy. When they improve Cedar Drive, the county is currently working on that. We've been working for some time to improve Third Street, Mill Street, and then Main. So it would take heavy trucks off of Engineer and move them back onto Main Street by going up Third, which is basically now a more industrial or business district, and keep it out of the Washington School area. Does that make sense?
Okay, I have a question, and this probably sounds silly, but by widening that curve to turn right, is that, what can we do to make sure that the semis don't try to go over the bridge?
We'll have it signed.
Okay.
Yeah, the intent is that they turn to the right. The bridge is already weight-limited, and we have signs out indicating its weight limit. We have, and we all know it, periodically someone will start across it, and then you've got a semi backing up.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that when this, that we don't start getting a bunch of traffic, drivers fly and get by what they want.
Yeah.
Be like down at Warsaw, the swinging bridge went and landed in the river because the guy thought he could get across it, and the semi loaded grain, they ended up in the river.
So we'll make sure we have it adequately signed. Again, I can't ever promise you.
Well, I mean, I. I make it inconvenient to be able to turn left, and it had bi-docks out there, you know, that should take care of that, but if we're making it where they can swing and turn, that will happen.
They'll be able to swing and turn right onto.
Right, but not left.
But not left.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I know we didn't get to have the meeting earlier in the week, I was going to hit it a little harder then, so sorry to call you out right now. Thanks.
Any other council discussion? Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-203, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a conveyance of easement agreement for property located at 101 South Washington Avenue in the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-203, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a conveyance of easement agreement for property located at 101 South Washington Avenue in the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Rule call, please. Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Third item I have tonight is an ordinance for acceptance of improving of two quotes for the replacement of two of our engines in Public Works. Two of those vehicles, the engines have failed, and we did not receive any bids for those products. So staff went out and found, went to two vendors and found two quotes. One is for Chefs International Truck Center for $32,409.49, and the other is from Rick Ball Ford for $16,009.23. This is an approval, an ordinance for the acceptance of this quote.
I have a question. I've noticed on the International, the labor was $7,425, and on the Ford from Ball, it was, the labor was $2,888. Do we have the mechanics to install these engines?
Can I have Dr. Argre speak to that?
Can I have Director Argre speak to that?
Okay. I asked him a question, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Having heard none, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-two, two oh four. An ordinance approving and accepting quotes for truck engine replacements.
Second reading. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two, two oh four. An ordinance approving and accepting quotes for truck engine replacements.
Final passage. Second. Rule call please. Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Final item I have tonight is a resolution for an ARCA grant application. Derek Dodson, our airport director, has learned of another grant opportunity similar to the previous ones received that are designed to offset added costs and lost revenue sustained by airports during the pandemic. And it appears that we would qualify for approximately thirty-two thousand dollars under this program. So we need a motion of approval for this resolution.
Call for the reading of, oh, any council discussion? Motion to approve. Well, I got a call for the reading of the resolution first.
You have to call for that first, okay.
You guys got anything, you want any questions or anything? Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution two thousand four. A resolution authorizing the Sedalia Regional Airport to submit an American Rescue Plan Act grant application. Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's all I have, you know.
All right, thank you Chairman Oldham. Uh, let's see, redevelopment, everything there. Public safety, Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Public safety, we have a strategic planning presentation from fire department. Please, please, there you go.
Mr. Shaw, do you have the clicker?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to get it out there. Clicker.
Mm-hmm. Hold on.
Good evening, everyone. Um, let's see if I get this door, there we go. So last year, as you're aware, we took the concept of the Ford them as our mission, kind of our mission statement. So in starting this, I kind of wanted to bring you guys up to speed of what Ford them meant to the citizens and to the department. So over the last year, we've washed down some businesses that have had some, not so much nice things put on their sidewalks, so we've gone out and washed those off. And we've done a lot of animal rescues. Go figure, we actually rescued a bird from a tree. A ball rescue, some smoke detectors, we've put in a lot of smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. We've been out to multiple, multiple PR events. And then the CHS, CHS raffle, which was during the Christmas parade this year, a young lady, Rhonda Avon actually won that event through CHS. A young lady named Chevy, she was a young cancer patient. She actually got to ride in the ladder truck on, from, through the parade with Santa Claus. So she was very excited about that. She wouldn't stop talking about it, it was great, it was cold outside too. It was a great parade. So looking back, what we went over last year was the three station model with the training center. We are starting that design work. We're going to go look at some fire stations and see what they have. We also discussed the squad development, deployment model. Two of those squads have been on, are on order with the third plan when we get station construction building on the third station. Looking, still looking to increase normal staffing as still planned for, as stations open and we get them built. We're still long-term planning for stations four and five. As the economic director said, that there's a lot of businesses that are coming to town, we are growing. I'm hoping at some point we see a large residential growth too, not just industry, I'd like to see some houses come in. But we have looked at forecasting stations four and five, which we went over last year. The Bryser compliance engine, that has been implemented and is working. And then the medical UTV that we asked for last year, we didn't budget for last year, the police department got that. We can share it with the police department, although it says police department on it, although written in, you know, firemen and all that, so.
We can get a magnetic sign.
So the third station and central fire replacement, design work is occurring. We're looking to begin construction of the two stations and the training center and starting this coming fiscal year with phase one, which would be the Hubbard Park Station. And about a year and a half expected construction on that building once it's, once we actually break ground, so. That's what our squads look like. They are Ford F-550 bodies, four door cabs with a box on the back. They are kind of different, one has an air system on it that we can refill our air packs when we're on house fires, so we don't have to come back to the station. When our air bottles are depleted, we can keep doing that, it saves me manpower, it saves me having to send a truck back across town to an air cascade system. The other is what we call a wet rescue, it does have a three hundred gallon water tank and pump on the back of it, so it can be used for small fires inside the city limits. This type of truck though, we do not necessarily want to put in a cornfield in the county, so we're going to use that, we're going to maintain them in the city, so. And we just went to Iowa here a couple of weeks ago. The cabin chassis have been ordered, we just don't know when we're going to get them. Ford did allow us to go ahead and open up to buy them, so. So our staffing today, currently we're at ten, normal staffing of ten personnel on duty twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That is four at the East Sedalia Station over on Hancock and six at the Sixteenth Street Station. Once the squads get in and we go to three stations, it's going to take a normal staffing of fifteen to man those trucks at all three stations with nineteen on the, on, per ship. Long-term city growth may require additional personnel and additional stations, we've kind of gone over that forecasting. And we're going to have to see what the city needs when we, when we look at manpower in the future. So stations four and five, we're long-range forecasting only. I didn't put the map in here because I showed it to you guys last year. One of them is over out by the New Core Complex and then one is over off of Cambridge in that area, a little farther south and west of town, so. That also covers Smith-Gotten High School, so it gets us a truck pretty close to that. Those are those guys. So that's the medical UTV we're still looking at. We have recognized a grant that we may have access to. There's actually two, one is a ten percent match and then one is a no cost to the city. So we're going to try to get the no cost to the city. And those are the items that we want to use it for, for parades. For those of you that were out during the Christmas parade and Thanksgiving events, the police department's little UTV was a lifesaver getting us, moving us people back and forth and that kind of thing. It allowed very good visibility also to the public that we were there. And then anything else that goes on downtown. We're also looking for grant opportunities, yes. So moving forward, our fire prevention. Mr. Carver, Jacob Carver is our second inspector that we put on. He is fantastic. He's very excited about everything that he can do fire prevention. I mean, it really is quite unsettling, he is that passionate about fire prevention. I mean, most of my guys want to run into burning buildings, they want to save lives, this guy wants to do nothing but do, how can he prevent it? He will have his PhD before, before too terribly long. So we're also looking at vehicles, equipment, and personnel in the upcoming budget year. This is one of the fire prevention items that Mr. Carver has located. This little, this little truck is expensive, but it does a whole lot of things. It has a video camera, it will play music, it will do everything. Mr. Carver has asked that we try to see if we can try to get funding for this. If not, we will try to find a grant that we can try to buy it off of, I'm not sure we're going to get that done. Certification for service providers is another thing that we were looking at this year to try to implement that we will be bringing to you. So basically what we do now is that if somebody goes out and they service a hood system or a fire sprinkler system or fire extinguishers or anything like that, we just require them to have a basic business license to do that, and insurance to do it. What we're going to try to look at doing is making sure that the people that are looking at these sprinkler systems, looking at these hood systems, have some sort of certification to go with that so that, that we know that they are trained to actually do that. So that is one of the things that we're going to look at implementing this year. Annual inspection fees. So as you may or may not, if anybody owns a business and they know that we come out and visit them, that first inspection that we go out on an annual inspection is free. It's our public service, we go out, we do it, we make sure that everything is working within your facility. And then your first re-inspection, if you have a business and you've had an exit light out or your smoke, or your fire extinguishers aren't exactly tagged yet, we come back out in thirty days to re-inspector facility. What we're looking at doing is possibly adding a fifty dollar fee for inspections after that. We have a lot of businesses in town that we are out six, seven, eight times before they actually physically fix their fire, their fire code violation. It is taxing on my personnel because we have to schedule that. It takes away from us being able to get out and do our new inspections and doing our re-inspections. So it is a lot of manpower hours to do that. So we're going to look at possibly doing that because there is no recourse to the, to the, to the businesses in town if they don't fix it until the following year when their business license renews and then they decide, well, I have to have this now for my business license, I'm going to go ahead and fix it. So we are going to look at trying to institute that so that sometime here in the next few months, you will probably see that come before you.
What's the inspection service that we subscribe to now, Jim?
Bryser is the inspection service.
Help me understand how all ties together with Bryser.
Real clear, I mean, so Bryser, when, so we require Bryser to report to us for hood systems, sprinkler systems, backflow preventers to the, to the water department. So basically every service organization that does business within the city of limits of Sedalia is required to report to Bryser. So if they have a failure in a sprinkler system or a hood system, they have to report that to Bryser. Bryser then in turn reports that back to us and then they send out the letters to the business that your, your system is out of compliance. They keep, and then so when that business goes to fix it, whoever goes in and fixes it also then has to report that back to Bryser that it's been fixed, then it comes, Bryser comes back to us. Basically Bryser is no charge to us, it does cost the business owner for those reports, but basically it keeps my inspectors from having to basically keep their thumb on everything that's going on in the city, it comes to them.
But they don't provide certification services?
No, they do not.
Great. And they're only inspecting those items?
Yeah.
They're not completely, everything too? Full fire inspection is several more things.
Yeah, they're doing, they're checking electrical boxes, they're, the inspectors, when they go out and do your businesses, it is quite the ordeal. I mean, it's, I think there's sixty-something things that they have to check off when they go in your business. And then we're looking at a fire safety village and somewhere that comes in the, one of the new fire stations. So as you guys have seen our trailer, the physical trailer that we pull around, that's got a lot of years on it, a lot of miles on it. It is starting to break down and needing, in need of some repair. What we're kind of looking at is a fire safety village of like, you've seen the little house that, that it kind of fire has that's being put in one station where they, kids can come in and throw water and it knocks down a fire out of the window, a little bike safety area, that kind of thing, and then some like little sheds that they can go in that are like kitchens and those kind of things. We're just trying to like build a village. We're working on it, it's not a full-blown plan yet, we're, we're still in the process of trying to hash out what we want that to look like and, and, and what we're going to do with it, so. Any questions? You look like you got a question.
Me?
Yeah.
No.
So vehicles, our inspector staff vehicles that we're looking possibly to purchase this year. As you're aware, we get the police department hand down, hand me downs. They are getting very old, we're having lots of parts on them. One of the chargers actually has like two little wings where the trim is starting to come off the doors. So we've, we keep putting like epoxy and stuff to try to hold it down, but it pops off. So a new vehicle for our inspectors would last us about fifteen to twenty years. It would, it's simply mileage on it and would all be inside the city limit, so. And our brush truck, not now, but soon. The brush truck that we currently have was purchased with federal dollars after nine eleven, I think it's a two thousand nine truck. So it's had a lot of mileage and it has seen a lot of cornfield. So it is starting to show some wear and tear on the structural components, the bed is starting to rust out, so at some time in the near future, we're probably going to need a brush truck as well. And then in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, you guys really don't want to hear this, but truck to the platform is scheduled for replacement. And what we have talked with city administrator and what we have also talked amongst ourselves in the department is that we don't think we need another platform truck. So the truck that we have now is a one point three million dollar aerial platform. We are looking to possibly go back to our reserve ladder, which is a straight stick, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a bucket on it. Its functionality is more, we can get it in more places because they're shorter wheelbases, they're single axle. So we're looking at possibly doing that as a replacement to the, to the platform truck. We will still have the platform truck, we'll probably have it another fifteen, twenty years after we move it out of, out of its first due, so it will be there. And then a new engine for the third station when that comes down. Now, we have discussed some, some functioning on how we can function and we, we may or may not have to, have to go that route with a new truck, but we are bringing it up to you guys just so you guys know that it's on the radar for us. One of the equipment things that we are looking at, and I think we talked about it with you guys at one point, is going to do attack package for our trucks. What that means is that when we get on house fire, we pull our hose lines, we pull our pre-connects, they're two hundred foot pre-connected lines off the truck. What we have found is, is that there is new technology out there for new hoses and new nozzles. And what those hoses and nozzles do, allow our trucks to run at a lower pressure, lower RPM. So they get more gallons of water out the nozzles at a lower RPM on the trucks. And it's all by design in the hose and the nozzle. So what we can flow now is about a hundred and fifty gallons of water at about, let me ask my driver operator what our pump pressure is for the hundred and fifty GPM attack line. So a hundred and forty-eight PSI is what we have to idle the truck up to. The new attack lines run at fifty PSI. So it's less, less wear on the motors, they don't have to RPM up as much on the trucks. So they have better functionality, they're improved safety, we get more water out of the water system because we're actually flowing more water at less pressure, so it doesn't pull from the system as greatly. So this is a three-year implementation that we're kind of looking at. To do each truck, one hose line on each truck is going to cost us about twenty thousand dollars. It is pricey. But if we can save wear and tear on the trucks, it also saves the wear and tear on my people. It's a less pressure, it's less nozzle reaction, less force, but one person can, can, can hold one of these hose lines at fifty PSI versus having to have two on a hose line at a hundred PSI. So we like the idea, we're going to bring it to you guys this budget year. So the new equipment for the new engine and the new squad, so the two squads, of course they are coming bare, we don't have any of them, so we are going to have to put equipment on them. That's going to be thermal imaging, air packs, computers, and axes and all of the equipment that come with those trucks. And it's looking about like it's going to come to about sixty-five thousand dollars a squad. About eleven thousand of that is in air packs alone, so. And then the new engine that we're looking at, that is coming, is about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to equip that truck. But down on that is a significant reduction if we decide to eliminate engine two out of our fleet. As most of you know, and you guys will get to, I think comes next, about fifty-two of my vehicle replace, our vehicle repairs, fifty-two percent of that budget in that line item goes to engine two. It is broke down all the time. In fact, it was broke down for about two hours today that fellows had to come down and work on, so. But some of that equipment on engine two is outdated and needs to be replaced, so there will still be some equipment needs for that truck. And we are working on establishing a replacement schedule program for that equipment. We're, unfortunately, you guys get to suffer with, with, I don't want to bash, but thirty years of neglect on some fans and we have fans now, there are gas fans and electric fans that are, that are dying because we've had them fifteen years and we never planned to replace them. So we're in the process of doing that now. Personnel is going to be increasing budgets for new hire training. So we had two resignations the day before yesterday. We lost two people to South Metro, they went to the city. I've talked to those guys. We're going to add the job market that, that is currently out there for firefighters. We are going to be hard pressed to get somebody to come in that has their Fire One and Two and their EMT already. We are a small market, I hate to say that, we are the Royals of the MLB that we can't compete with places like Columbia and South Metro. One of my firefighters is going to South Metro with basically thirteen months experience, is going to make forty-seven thousand dollars a year. And, and we literally cannot compete with that. I, I just, they are a fire protection district. Their money is their fire department, they don't have to worry about police and roads and water and sewer and all of that that we have to worry about. So we are in the process right now of working out how we can do a class, bring people. So we are in the process right now of working out how we can do a class, bring people in, put them on staff, and then put them through our own fire one and two academy while we're paying them to be there. What we have found is if we can get somebody in that is interested, if we go a couple weeks and we don't get back with that person and they're waiting to test or they're waiting for that, they go somewhere else. This last testing cycle, we had a fire one and two guy and EMT. He was prior military. Between the time that he applied and the time that we actually did our physical testing, he had already been offered a job and he declined coming to test for that. So we're also looking at sign-on bonuses for those that are already certified. And we were going to be in talks with the city administrator and mayor about upstaffing, preparing for the expansion prior to our new stations, but upstaffing so that we can keep people in place.
When you go to fifteen nineteen, what will that do as far as the total number of employees?
When we go to nineteen, that's going to put fifty-seven staff suppression personnel.
My question for you, if we, the hoses, the hoses that we have now, will there be a market to sell them to?
Sure there would be. Absolutely there would be. Not going to be a huge market.
I understand.
But there would be some cost recovery from that, yes.
A little bit of something to hold, hold, I bet in the nothing.
That, you are correct, yes. So this is our implementation plan for the next few years. We are already working on the design work for both stations. Twenty twenty-four, we're going to hopefully start construction on the Hubbard Station. Start construction on possibly a new engine for the third station if we have to go that way. And we would like to apply for a safer grant. So you will see a resolution for a safer grant come through. I believe that is scheduled to open sometime mid-January twenty twenty-three. And so does anybody know what a safer grant is? Is everybody familiar with it? I've kind of explained it to some of them, but if you want me to go over it again, I will. So a safer grant is a federal grant through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. And what a safer grant does is that we figure out how much it's going to cost us for X number of employees. We apply for that grant for that amount. So let's say it's going to cost us one point five million dollars for three years, hire employee for three years. The federal government will pay us that one point five million dollars. They will actually pay for those employees for the first three years of their employment. So that's what a safer grant does.
For new positions also?
For new positions and I have, knock on wood, I have heard now that through the no-fo that because of retention, that it may be to keep employees as well. So even if we're short employees, we can use the safer grant to pay for openings, for vacancies that are already on our roster. So we're, I won't know that until the no-fo comes out. So knock on wood, we'll have that opportunity. So and then in twenty twenty-five, a major hiring cycle. We did have a number of personnel there, but I don't know how many that's going to be. But we will start, need to start hiring in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which is twenty twenty-four, right? Year twenty twenty-four, this whole fiscal year and real year are still hard to process. So we will need to hire as we are starting to open the second station and we will then ramp that up for the third station. In twenty twenty-six, Hubbard Station and the engine put into service, operating with headquarters, Central and Hubbard, until we get the Centennial Park Station built. And then once the Centennial Park Station is built, we will abandon the Central Fire Station on Hancock. And then in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, Central Fire Station, Centennial Fire Station's put into service, Central comes out. Any questions? So in summary, you heard economic development of all the money they're bringing in. I'm glad I got to follow that with all the money you get to put out. So we are here for them and that's what's driving us going forward. We are here for the citizens of Sedalia. We've tried to prove that with the Thanksgiving Day event and then the Christmas Day parade and all of that. I mean, you guys saw us, the mayor saw us, everybody saw us out there. But we tried to stay in the background because we were there for your protection and the citizens' protection, not necessarily to sit there and enjoy the parade, although it was a fantastic parade. But our personnel there, police personnel, and I got to give credit to Street and Alley. They had a ton of people there. It was great. So we're going to improve our people to better serve them, our citizens, improving our public relations, being more accessible to them, growing with our community so we can be available for them, developing and deployment models to meet their needs and forecasting so we can solve their problems before they know they exist. Any questions?
Not really a question, but a comment. Just for everybody's identification, you know, we're talking about the Hubbard location and the Centennial location. What we plan to do, and you know, the architects will, are putting together the information and then we'll do design shreds and those kinds of things. So there will be input, our opportunity for input, certainly from council, but also from the general public as far as those locations, what those stations look like, how they will fit into the community and those kinds of things. So you know, it's not entirely decided. That's just what we've identified as the best locations for those. And of course, we already own the property, so that helps.
Yeah. I think the contractors, the architects said there's going to be like a two-week period that they're going to put pictures all over our training facility. And the general public, council's all going to be able to come in and look at different façades, different fixtures, different everything of, everything possible for the fire station and layouts and all of that that you guys will get to look at and help decide on what we want better for the community. I have talked with Daniel and we are going to try to get something to the locals. We're going to try to go to the churches and everything that's in those communities and basically try to town hall it, if we will, to get those citizens that don't want to come over to the station to show them what these fire stations are going to be and what they're going to look like. Because they're yours. They're not mine. They're yours.
I have a question, man.
Yes, sir.
On that, on that little car you was talking about, that little fire truck?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how's that able to be moved around?
It drives itself.
Okay.
So it has, it's like a remote control car and it drives and it moves and it has.
Let's say if we wanted to down here, how you going to get down here? You're not going to drive it from the.
I'm going to probably put it in the back of a Durango and bring it down here to you or in the back of my truck. We'll get it here. It's not terribly heavy. It is somewhat heavy, but it's, you can lift it up. I think it's like a hundred and something pounds. I look at the specs briefly on it. It's not exactly terribly heavy. It's all plastic. But it has speakers and a headset and the guy driving it can talk and it has all of the things that you can, a speaker so you can hear what the kids are saying and all of that. But we would bring it down here for you.
But you're taking it to schools for.
Taking it to schools. I have grand plans because it's got a couple hour runtime. I've got grand plans of actually making it its own slope during the Christmas parade to drive in front of the big truck that's carrying sand. Maybe put some reindeer on it. But yes, we would be able to, it is movable and it can go in vehicles to bring wherever we need it to.
Well, might be, might be in that cost of that, you could maybe, we could find a little tilt trailer, little ten-foot tilt trailer maybe.
I'm sure we could find one.
I have one that you could use anytime you would need it.
Okay.
You know, I think it'd be neat, like when I do schools with the dare car, we could hook it to the dare car and take it down there and have one of your guys there with it. So I'm thinking ahead.
I like the way you think because I'd like to get it out there to schools, to car shows, to you name it. I didn't want to bring it to the pub calls because apparently you can also get a little water pack that goes in it and spray people. It's going to be water. It's going to be water. So but yeah, we want to get it out as much as we possibly can. And again, that is Mr. Carver. Again, it scares me how much he wants to get out. And if you guys were at the parade, that was Mr. Carver that was in the fire pup suit that walked the entire parade route with one of our other firefighters. So.
It's electric?
It is electric, yes. It was battery operated, yes.
Like a little golf cart maybe?
Yeah. Any other questions? I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Do you want me to hang out because I may have questions about what's coming next?
There may be more questions.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
Our department has two vehicles that need repair and the total amount is about fifteen thousand dollars. So we need an amendment to the budget to incorporate that into, so they can do the.
Any council discussion regarding the resolution and ordinance connected to this? Have you heard none? Call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution two thousand five. The resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia is stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty-three.
If you could approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Call opposed? Call for the reading of the resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, sorry.
Bill number two thousand twenty-two, two oh five. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three regarding fire vehicle repairs.
Second reading.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Call opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two, two oh five. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three regarding fire vehicle repairs.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
We have the need for two ordinances. One, amending the city code regarding marijuana and one imposing a three percent sales tax on recreational, on retail sales of recreational marijuana. I don't know what, I suppose everyone's read most of the, but of the ordinance, so I guess all we need is. Yeah, this is update for city code with regards to recreational marijuana. A lot of this carryover from whenever we update our city code for medical marijuana. And then the second ordinance regarding that tax, that's to put a three percent sales tax on the ballot in April for if the voters can then decide on whether or not they want us to go there, you know, and impose that tax on the sale of retail sale of marijuana. Any council questions regarding this?
Yes, on the marijuana voting, we're going to be voting on it. I am against it, but I know it's passed and so we might as well get the sales tax off of it.
Yeah, and we've talked about that internally as far as using to have additional tax monies to send more of our officers to the drug recognition program to where they can actually go ahead and do, issue DUIs if people drive under the influence of marijuana. That's going to be helpful. And we even talked about how we're probably going to need to send some of our HR staff to that same drug recognition program so they can see whenever, you know, somebody is impaired or under the influence of marijuana, the way the law works. It'll help offset some of those costs associated with this.
You know, we make that part of the, part of the ordinance to direct, so the people know that we're charging this extra tax to help the people that, like Bob and myself, I mean, for the last thirty years, I fought against marijuana. So, you know, I'm totally against it, but you know, the state passed it and it's here and, you know, I think we should get the funding. But I think it should be directed to keep preventing people from doing wrong with it.
Yeah, and that's all part of the messaging when we start talking about it, right, after it's on the paper. Any other council discussion? Have you heard none? Call for the reading of the first ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-two, two oh six. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia amending the city code regarding marijuana.
Second reading.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Call opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two, two oh six. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia amending the city code regarding marijuana.
Final passage.
Roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Call for the reading of the second ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-two, two oh seven. An ordinance imposing a three percent tax on the retail sale of recreational marijuana to be placed on the ballot for the April four, twenty twenty-three municipal election.
Second reading.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Call opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two, two oh seven. An ordinance imposing a three percent tax on the retail sale of recreational marijuana to be placed on the ballot for the April four, twenty twenty-three municipal election.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. In other business, we have the acceptance of resignations. Call for the reading of the resignations.
We actually have three tonight. There's two for Bothell Regional Health Center Board of Trustees, our Will Defoe, her effective immediately, and Stafford Swerengen, effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And then we also have resignation from Kevin Wade for Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Call opposed? Thank you. Now, I mean, we have one appointment. Call for the reading of the appointment.
We have one new appointment to members of the City Council from Mayor Andrew Dawson. Would like to make the following recommendation. Planning and zoning commission appoint Talbot Rowe, completing Kevin Wade's term, ending June twenty twenty-three. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Do we have any miscellaneous items from the City Council or City Administrator? First, I would just like to say that a big thank you to the White and Air Force Base, the Security Forces Command, or their help in setting up and walking with us in the parade as well as helping us tear down. They were, they were a lot of help and it's great to see them out.
Speaking of the parade, I've had several people comment on the barricades and how they are much needed. Everyone felt safe. Nobody was running in front, no near misses with vehicles. So I think that was a big inclusion.
I will, I will add to that. I've been in the parade thirty-two years. I believe that's the biggest crowd that has ever been there. And, you know, I drove my car and the dare car went down through there, didn't have to worry about slamming on the brakes. And, you know, it was a big improvement, money well spent.
In fact, I talked to, I was talking to Deborah over the chamber this afternoon on the phone. She said that there was a couple that normally do a float and that last year they had a near miss with a kid and they were not, they decided they were not going to do the parade anymore after seeing what we had going on with the barricades and keeping everybody safe. They're, they're back in, so.
Yeah, I've heard that too.
Quite common.
Guys from the car club are bringing their, they'll sign up that they'd be in next year instead of having fifteen cars, they'll probably have thirty, thirty cars there because that was the problem. The kids were running out, you know, these kids act like they've never had a piece of candy in their life. And they'd run out there and they'd have split sole boots on and they'd just, they'd go to stop and they didn't stop. And, you know, so, yeah, I think it's a big improvement.
Yeah, in the past, the parades, I know those kids is running down in the middle of the street picking up candy and stuff. And so none of that happened this year. So those barricades is really going to improve the safety of our parades in the near future.
Any other items? Oh, yeah, we did have a, oh, the assessment mentioned City of Sedalia and paper in one of his rebuttal, it was a school demographer gave a presentation. And we just wanted to briefly talk about that and see if that was something that you guys wanted us to respond to as far as some of those assertions that he made.
I believe we ought to ask him to come here and make a presentation to us. I appreciate the newspaper doing it. We don't have a newspaper that often investigates things, but they don't have enough people. But they got into that and that was, that was information worth knowing and I think it would be good to get it firsthand.
Anybody else?
That'd be interesting to hear what a message could be in rebuttal to it.
I got a minute. I'm in the dark on them because I don't get the paper.
I'm sure they're going to. Yeah, I'm sure it'll already go in. Okay, well, we're looking to do that and maybe we'll bring something back next council. Uh, that's everything.
Good and well fair.
Yep, we'll go ahead and-
Call for, uh, if there's any members of the audience who'd like to, uh, make a comment, city council, you please, uh, step to the podium, state your name, your address, and then you have approximately three minutes to go ahead and make whatever comments you want to sit down.
Good evening, my name is Gloria Ward, I'm an attorney here in Sedalia, I practice here about thirty years. I wasn't planning on coming to visit with you guys this evening, but a series of events over the last twenty-four hours-
Mrs. Ward, can you, uh, please state your name for the record and address? Or you, you've already stated your name, but your address, I'd appreciate it.
Um, my office address is five fourteen and five twelve South Ohio here in Sedalia.
All right, thank you.
I wasn't planning on coming here, um, but a series of events in the last day made me want to just bring some things to the council's attention, because if you don't know about them, then we don't know what to do about them, or maybe there's just more information to be brought about. So first of all, I was wanting to be on the planning and zoning, um, agenda, which is set for Wednesday, so in doing that, I was sending Kevin Wade an email requesting to be placed on the agenda and I was looking at the city council website to see what other emails I should attach, or other people I should get notice to. And on the website, I saw that there are now assignments that the council members have and one of the assignments that I had never seen before was the Mercy Rest Stop. And so, Councilwoman, um, Bogus, I see that you're the chairman of that and Council Bliss, I see you're the vice chairman and Mr. Marshall, I hear you're the, um, committee as well. What I wanted to tell you guys is, I don't have it, um, I don't have a client involved in this, I am offering that if you guys need help with anything about that, please let me know. I would be happy to review, give input, just from the legal standpoint of it, not representing any one person. If you want some help with that, I'm here, I'm happy to help. Oftentimes, people just complain and I'm saying, what can I do to help? Okay, so I want to make sure you guys know that. Then I sent the email to Kevin, um, asking if I could be put on the agenda and you guys in response to that, I got Kevin's resignation letter and when it was with great regret. And I just want to make sure everybody knows what he said in that letter.
Now, Miss Ward, I copy, it has been provided by all council here.
Okay, and so what we need to make sure we understand is, he expressed before, I'm concerned that the proposed cumulative zoning and transitional services ordinances are unnecessary, discriminatory, and in opposition to our city's proud history of being both business friendly and compassionate to the less fortunate of our Sedalia neighbors. My family and I made Sedalia our home in large part thanks to that proud history and sense of community. You guys, I bring this to the council's attention, you guys, I've done a lot of looking at this cumulative zoning and this transitional housing only because I read something in the newspaper that didn't seem to, to stand to reason. And since then, I have spent a considerable time reviewing it from the objective standpoint of just an attorney. You guys, I think there's many questions that should be asked about these ordinances that are being proposed, one of which is, what are we trying to fix? Whose idea was this? And what are we really tr- really going to accomplish by these ordinances? You guys, I don't have a client that I'm representing, but if we don't think these through, I do have impact or, um, been contacted by clients who I do work for. They are thinking of not doing, um, planned events that the city needs, because these ordinances are going to impact their development, because they develop these plans based on the current cumulative zoning. It is substantial, it is impactful, but if we don't think these ordinances through, we are going to drive away this development. That's just on the cumulative zoning, cause it's been in place forever and everybody plans their, their advancements based on what's already in, in place. Then we have the transitional services ordinance. Because I don't know where the Mercy Rest Stop is supposed to go, I didn't know the history behind it, but I don't understand why this has become such a controversial issue, because I think we can all work together with the economic development and the transitional services, because with all of this economic development that is coming, which is great, everybody's worked really hard to bring the economic development. You know, we want to put in water lines, we want to put in sewer lines, but we also have to develop the human infrastructure. And you guys, you can't regulate away misfortunate people. In the current ordinance, there is a, it can't be one that's been a thousand feet of a whole list of things. You guys, your good and ordinance away, where the people who are trying to help the homeless can put these things. You're not going to regulate away homelessness. All I'm saying is, I think there's a solution, there's a lot of good people who I think are all trying to come up with a solution. But be careful what we're doing, because we're gonna drive away some really important economic development and the homeless people aren't gonna be regulated away. But if we're not careful, we're going to drive away the people who are trying to help the homeless situation and that doesn't make the homeless people go away. And if we're bringing more people in, those numbers are gonna go up. But I think if we want to work together, we can come up with a solution. And all I'm saying is, I'm not telling you how to do it, cause you guys have that tough job. What I'm saying is, if anybody here knows a way I can help, I'm saying I'll help you.
All right, thank you for your comments and your offer of support.
I have a question. If I am cumulative zoning for me, please.
Good question. Okay, the way the city zoning is right now, the way it's been forever, the way everybody plans everything, think of a funnel, okay? The broader the funnel, the more things that can go in. Residential zoning is the broadest one. Then it goes down from there, there can be commercial, then there can be industrial, then heavy industrial. So, by, what do I mean by funnel? Heavy industrial can't go in residential, okay? A residential can go anyplace, commercial can only go down, industrial can only go down, it'd be not be quite as smooth to heavy industrial, but it's that cumulative zoning has always been in place. So you know that if somebody wants to build a hotel, as long as it's commercial, it can go in commercial, it can go in industrial or heavy industrial, those may not, don't quote me on those terms, but that's the concept. What happens is, the proposal that started was, no, heavy industrial can only go here, residential can only go here, commercial can only go here. But if you don't tell everybody that's coming in, you're gonna annex in land subject to the planning and zone, planning, or the zoning law. But if the structures haven't been started, they're gonna get stuck with these new ones when they develop all of these plans based on cumulative zoning. Then there was the suggestion that we're not gonna give building codes to certain people they don't mean specifically within this definition. And you guys, I will tell you, lawyers disagree on stuff all day long, but I disagree with that concept that's been given to the council. And I've had as, as many, um, cases to back up my position as a lawyer's due for the city. And you guys, that's okay, lawyers disagree on stuff all day long, okay? But ask yourself this, if the people have been advising, the city has said, if it doesn't specifically say something in the statute, you can't build it here, why is it that it's just now coming up in answer to the Mercy Rest Stop? Don't you think that might've come up before? And you guys, again, lawyers, we can argue about stuff all day long, I'm very proud of the work that I do and I can deal with that hard ass. But that's not the way to solve this problem. That's what I'm saying is, if we think this stuff through, we can come up with solutions based on cumulative zoning staying in place, having access to vote to address Mercy Rest Stop if that's what you want to call it, that's what was on the assignment. Because you guys, I'm sure you guys know, there's a national homeless organization who has threatened litigation and I believe they're serious. I just think we can use our resources for a lot better, if we just throw our heads together and come up with a solution. And I don't know what that is, cause you guys don't have time to say on that. What I'm saying is, what can I do to help? And please don't have to say I'm serious about it when I offer it to help, I really will be there. So I just want everybody to think those things through. The planning and zoning thing that bothered me, you guys, the rule today, if the planning and zoning committees do not vote in favor or oppose to these ordinances within sixty days of them being presented to the planning and zoning committee, they come to you with the approval from the planning and zoning committee. And these have been a working progress, there's been lots of changes to them and Kevin Wade was involved in those. And then he decided it was time for him to resign, those are his choices. But if the planning and zoning committee does not vote on it Wednesday, arguably, they come to the council with the approval of the planning and zoning committee. You guys, that's all in your ordinances. And so, I've, I've run a whole lot about it, I learned a lot more about your zoning that I really care to, but I made this offer to help to Kevin Wade a few months ago and he said, lawyer, you are a warden. And you guys, if you would care to, I put my comments in writing. I'm happy to share those, I'm just here to say, make sure you guys know what's going on, uh, and that's all I'm offering is, I have information if you want it, but if you don't want it, that's fine too. I'm just saying, what can I do to help if you want my help?
Right here. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience who'd like to address council?
All right.
Have you heard none? All, we're saying the motion.
Motion to move the closed door session for legal advice, real estate and negotiated contracts.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody, thank you.
Bye.
Merry Christmas.
Bye.
Oh, I don't, I need to use my, uh, uh, we see each other before Christmas, that's what I do, I don't have-